We are, that's your cue that we're in public session and I'm turning on the transcript. And I'm recording. So you guys should be good to go. All right. Members of the Board of Trustees Committee on Faculty Staff and Administration, please respond present when you hear your name. Chairperson Lorraine Cortez Vasquez.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Ken Sunshine.
Recording in progress.
I see you Ken, so I'll mark you in. Trustee Una Clark. Not yet.
Here, here, here.
There, no problem. A trustee, Armenia Palacio.
Present.
Great trustee.
Present.
Professor Karen Coughlin. Oh, I see she's in the waiting room, so we will hit admit. Okay, Professor Maureen Matarazzi.
Present.
The faculty alternate, great. And Luis DiMillo is the new student rep, but I don't see him. Okay, you have a quorum. The public meeting of the Committee on Faculty Staff and Administration is now called to order. I'd like to take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery. Members of the Chancellery, please respond present when you hear your name. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez.
Present.
General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs Derek Davis.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Dan Lemmons.
Present.
Great, Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista.
Presente.
Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace. I saw, I heard you. Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria.
Present.
Interim Vice Chancellor Andrea Shapiro Davis.
Present.
President Thomas S. Secondegby is the COPS liaison. Didn't see Thomas yet, okay.
Nope.
And we have a very large group of people that are guests from Lehman College with some additions that just happened in the last five minutes. So if I missed your name, please don't be offended, but your name just came. So Victor Brown, Associate Provost for Academic Programs and Educational Effectiveness. Not here, okay. Dawn Ewing Morgan, Vice President of Diversity and Human Resources.
He's not coming.
Not coming, okay. Pamela Mills, interim dean.
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Mary Rogan, professor of the Department of Economics and Business and the former general counsel.
Present.
Okay. President Fernando Delgado. Not yet. Deanie Hurley, the professor and department chair.
I'm here.
Great. Provost Peter Nwosu. And Vice President Renee Rotolo. Okay, and Richard Finger is the Senior Director of Enrollment Management. I don't know if he's joined, but those are the names I was just given. Okay, so that's it. So you're good to go. Here's Richard Finger. You're good to go, Lorraine. Do you want me to keep reading? You're muted.
I'm unmuted now after 18 months, I think.
Yeah, do you want me to keep reading, Lorraine?
No, no, that's okay.
You got it? Okay, good.
Are you gonna read, did you just read all of the?
This next part about how to vote, yep. Given that all the board members are participating remotely, Lorraine will announce the resolutions and ask for members to respond only if you would like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be reported as a yes vote. If you're voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name first for the record and let's try to avoid speaking over one another.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Gail. The first, we'll take up the following items for approval. Action Item 1A is the approval of the minutes of the October 4th, 2021 meeting. I move the approval of action item A. Do I have a second?
This is Armenia Palacio's second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will now vote. Again, please respond only if you're abstaining or or a voting no. All right. Hearing no abstentions or objections, this motion is carried. And now we go to action item 1B, which is the policy calendar. Item 1B1 is the resolution to approve the Committee of Faculty Staff and Administration report. Now I call on Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria to provide some background on this item.
Thank you. The December CFSA report contains actions entered into the CUNY system of record between August 28th, 2021 and October 15th, 2021. The report contains a total of 62 actions, including 24 appointments and reappointments with tenure, 17 fellowship leaves, and 18 ECP regular and interim appointments.
Thank you. Will we, okay, let me. I move the approval of policy item 1B1. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions on any of these actions, the 24 appointments or reappointments with tenure or fellowship leaves?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
No, no, I was asking the committee members. Vice Chancellor, I was asking them if they had any questions on any one of the items that you discussed. Hearing none, um, we are moved for the policy item of, and you just second again. So, um, we're gonna take a vote. Hearing no abstentions or rejections, this vote has been carried. This item has been carried. Policy item 1B2, a resolution to transfer faculty to a newly established school of business at Lehman College of the City University of New York. I call on Executive Vice Chancellor and City University Provost Dan Lemmons to provide some background on this item.
Thank you Chair Cortez Vasquez, and good afternoon, everyone. The Herbert H. Lehman College Department of Economics and Business has evolved over the past 20 years, both in terms of its undergraduate and graduate programs. And its offerings now have expanded and has an expanding number of students. Greatly expanded numbers of students. So in response to that, Lehman has undergone a rigorous process to determine what it should do and concluded that the departmental structure that currently has no longer sufficient. And so it is proposed to create a school of business that will house three distinct departments in place of the current single department of economics and business. The three new departments are the Department of Accounting, the Department of Management and Business Innovation, and the Department of Finance, Information Systems, and Economics. This new school would not only be the only public school of business in the Bronx, but also in the entire lower Westchester region. The new school will not only be distinct in its geography and the area that it covers, but also in its approach in emphasizing entrepreneurship and experiential learning. I'd like to give my colleagues at Lehman an opportunity to respond to any questions Chair Cortez Vasquez may have. Attending today, we have Lehman College's President Fernando Delgado, the Provost and Senior Vice President Peter Nwosu, Vice President Renee Rotolo, Dean of Natural and Social Sciences Pam Mills, and Chair of the current department, Dean Hurley.
Great. Thank you all for participating. And welcome, President. I have not seen you since the search, so it's great to get to be in a meeting with you. Are there any questions about this consolidation? And transfer is a better way to say it.
Yeah, I mean, I have a question. I mean, I'd just like to hear from the people from Lehman why they're excited, why we should vote on this.
Yeah, great.
I will start. So we have been discussing about school of business for at least 10 years at Lehman College, and especially as the department has grown. We are currently under the School of Natural and Social Sciences. So, which has also grown, the STEM course programs have also grown significantly. So we have 11 departments within that school and it's become harder for us as a business program to grow under that structure. And so we feel that this is the best route for us is to kind of be, to have our own school where we have also have a dean eventually who will be knowledgeable about business programs and be able to lead us in that growth.
Any other questions? My question is, I'm excited that this is gonna be the first business school in the Bronx as a Bronxite. And I'm also very excited that it even affects the broader region. Because PACE is a school, I don't think it's a school of business. The question that I have is what is the collaboration with, let's say, the graduate school or with Baruch?
Well, as you know, each school has their own theme or their own area that they expand. So Baruch has its own, you know, area that they focus on. Baruch has been in existence for many years and has established themselves. We have to, we have, we will have our own focus and we will be focusing on the Bronx and the Bronx residents and lower Westchester area. So that would be our market area. And basically, our goal is to incorporate a lot of experiential learning in our school programs. Because we feel that our students in the Bronx especially, and also in lower Westchester, but in Bronx in particular, they, you know, they, a lot of them would, could need this professional exposure. So we are working, as a department, we've been working with employers in partnership. And we feel that that's where we're gonna focus on that and help develop the skills of our students so that they'll be ready for the professional careers when they leave us.
Do you have a, excuse me, do you have a targeted number of students that you would say we are at capacity? What would be the capacity of the student?
Well, we have currently, there are about 1,500 majors in our department. And that, and the department is made up of three programs. So it's, and we have, you know, quite a few faculty on top of that. So it's becoming very, almost like ineffective or inefficient to have one department that with this huge number of students. And therefore, we feel that it would better serve our students if we can be independent and carve our path for going forward. So we have, I feel that we have a significant, we're looking at 2% to 3% growth over the next few years. So we feel that, you know, we can serve that as a school as opposed to being a department within the School of NSS. As one of the 11 departments, actually. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, I move the approval of policy item 1B2. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Clark, we'll now move for a vote. Hearing no, go ahead. Hearing no abstentions or rejections, this motion carries. This policy item carries. Policy item 1B3 is the resolution to appoint regular members of the Executive Compensation Plan. And again, I will call on Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria to provide background information on this item.
Thank you. During the COVID-19 pandemic, the Chancellor of the City University of New York instituted a vacancy review board to monitor all staffing expenditures, including appointments to the Executive Compensation Plan. Depending on the needs of each university's central office, school, or college, appointments were made on an interim basis pursuant to a search or pending a search waiver. The Office of Recruitment and Diversity is carefully reviewing each of these search waivers and anticipates their timely approval. And the VRB has now determined that these certain appointments may be presented to the University Board of Trustees as regular members of the Executive Compensation Plan effective December 14th, 2021, superseding all prior appointment dates.
Thank you. Any, I move the approval of this item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll take this for a vote. I move this. Hearing no abstentions or oppositions, this vote is carried. I mean, this policy item is carried. Policy item 1B4 is a resolution to name the Otto and Fran Walter Memorial Lecture Series at the Graduate Center. And again, I am, oh, no, no. I am calling on Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace to provide further background on this item.
Good evening, everyone. The Otto and Fran Walter Foundation has supported a number of broad, broad variety of charitable concerns. And they've actually supported the Grad Center at the Ralph Bunch Institute for Institutional Studies for the past 19 years. And they've contributed $810 million, excuse me, $810,000 to the Grad Center Foundation. Maybe that'll be next year. In September 2021, they've committed to giving a quarter of a million dollars to the Grad Center Foundation to permanently endow an annual lecture series focused on topics relating to European public policy presented by the Ralph Bunch Institute for International Relations European Union Studies Center. That amount certainly meets the minimum naming policy amount. And we ask that you support this great lecture series.
Congratulations. That's a nice award. I move the approval of policy item 1B4. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Palacio. Any discussion on this item?
When I went there, I got the same.
Okay, somebody.
They might wanna mute, because there's another conversation going on.
Now we'll call for a vote. Angelo, I think you need to mute yourself. We'll call a vote. No, Una's not, Una's.
Yes?
No, no, Una, no, they were saying it might be you and I'm saying it's not you.
No, it's not.
Only respond again if you're going to abstain or object to this. Hearing no abstentions or objections, this policy item is carried. Congratulations. That is, seems like a very good lecture series.
And maybe that 81 million will come soon, who knows?
Yeah, yeah, I know. Yeah, from your lips to, you know, to his ears. Policy item 1B5 is a resolution to accept gifts from the estate of Evelyn Morgan Besser to Hunter College. And now again, I'm gonna call on Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace to provide some information on this.
This is the first of a number of resolutions that are dealing with bequests that Hunter received over the past couple of years. This one is from Evelyn Morgan Besser, who graduated from Hunter College in 1941. And she bequeathed a percentage of her estate to Hunter College to be used without restriction. She passed away in 2017. And in 2019, Hunter College received a distribution of about $38,000 from her estate. Hunter College deposited this distribution in a subaccount which was restricted and with only money from bequest was in that amount, in that account. And now we're asking that the Board of Trustees approve the acceptance of this gift.
We will always say nice and welcome to gifts. I move the approval of policy item 1B5. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Great. Hi, how are you? Welcome. Now we'll call a vote. Hearing no objections or abstentions, this motion carries. Congratulations. And I just heard that Hunter has a Rhodes Scholar, which is amazing. Another Rhodes Scholar. Congratulations, Glenda Grace and your team for this work. All right. I got a policy item 1B6. Again, it's another resolution for a gift from the estate of Adele Pauley to Hunter College.
Yes, and Adele Pauley graduated from Hunter College in 1963. And she bequeathed a percentage of her estate to Hunter College. She passed away and in March of 2019, Hunter learned about her passing and then received a distribution of about $44,764.2. They deposited, they deposited the amount in a subaccount that was restricted and set up to hold this distribution, this bequest. And we're asking that the Board of Trustees accept this gift on behalf of Hunter College.
Thank you so much. I see that there are several of them for Hunter. Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace, do you think that we can take them as a group? Or do you feel best if we do them individually?
What I think we can do is let me describe, describe the, there's two more in this category. So in addition to the one from, and I just wanna make sure, from Adele Pauley, Pauley, there's one from Norma Schmidt, who graduated from Hunter College in 1953. And executed the Norma P. Schmidt 1991 Trust. As part of that agreement, Miss Schmidt bequeathed a percentage of the funds to Hunter College. The funds were received, two distributions were received, one in 2018 and the second in 2019, and they totaled $200,282.28. And that's one of the resolutions. And then another resolution, which also is dealing with an estate, is from the estate of Saul Stotmyer to Hunter College. The renowned poet Colette Inez was a Hunter College alumna who graduated from Hunter in 1961. Miss Inez married Saul Stotmyer, who bequeathed a percentage of his estate to Hunter College to be used without restriction. And he passed away in 2018. And the college received four distributions from his estate totaling $41,876.43. I move that, or these resolutions.
But you can't, wait, you can't move, sorry, Glenda, sorry. Sorry about that.
I got it, Gail, I got it.
You called me faster than I corrected. The resolutions ask that the board accept these, all of these gifts on behalf of Hunter College.
So thank you so much, Vice Chancellor, Senior Vice Chancellor Grace. So we are now, I'm asking to approve item 1B6, which is the estate of Adele Pauley. 1B7, which is the estate of Norma Schmidt. And item 1B8, which is the estate of Saul Stotmyer. I move all these three items. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Angelo, we will.
Great. Any discussion on any of these items? Thank you for that robust development effort. We are now called for a vote. Hearing no abstentions or objections, these items have moved. Thank you so much. And I'm gonna call on you again, Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace, to provide us a little background on the naming of the Eva Hessi Endowment Prize for Excellence at Hunter College.
Eva Hessi was a groundbreaking female sculptor who tragically died in 1970 at the age of 34. She's long been recognized as a great talent and a trailblazer. Her sister Helen Hessi Shirash, who's an alumna of Hunter College, recently helped to establish the Eva Hess Tribal Foundation that works to honor Ms. Hess's work and her legacy. In May of 2021, the foundation made a gift of $100,000 to the Hunter College Foundation to support an endowed prize for female students who are talented visual artists with a passion for pursuing a career in art. And awardees will be selected by the Hunter College Art and Art History Department. We're asking that the Board of Trustees approve the naming of the gift of the Eva Hessi Prize for Excellence at Hunter College.
Wonderful. And I move that this item be accepted. Is there a second?
Second, Angelo, we will.
Thank you so much. Welcome, Angelo. I have one question of Vice, Senior Vice Chancellor Grace, which is the Award for Excellence, is that a student-based award or is that an award given to faculty?
It's going to be student-based, high-performing female students in the third year of their Hunter College MFA Studio Art Program.
Oh, right, you did mention it was for studio arts. Thank you so much. Any other questions or discussions? Hearing none, this, we'll take a vote on this. Hearing no abstentions or objections, this item has carried. Now we go to policy item 1B10, which is the resolution to accept an anonymous donation to the City College of New York. Again, I love these anonymous ones. Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace, congratulations, by the way, Glenda, on the work that we've done in development, you know, for the past year and a half or two years since you've taken over. So congratulations on that.
Just to be clear, interim Vice Chancellor Andrea Shapiro Davis is on. And Alina Goralek from the office works really carefully with all of the colleges. And we're just excited that we're able to bring in those gifts. This anonymous donation. This has the, there's a lot going on here.
I don't want to not acknowledge interim Chancellor Andrea Shapiro. So I was giving you kudos, but that does not mean I was excluding her. All right, give us some background on this anonymous gift that we're all dying to hear about.
Thank you. This gift involves the FBI. It involves a box of money of about $100,000 showing up at City College. So in the middle of the COVID pandemic, Dr. Vinod Manone, the Chair of the Physics Department at City College, came to his office to review mail for the first time since March of 2020 due to COVID-19. And he opened a cardboard box that he'd received. And it was received by the CCNY Mailroom several months earlier. And the box contained $180,000 in cash.
Oh, Jesus.
Include, including, included, I'm gonna read the entire letter and then, because the letters are pretty amazing.
Wait, did I hear you right?
Yeah, it's a shoebox.
Exactly, cash.
Somebody found a shoebox.
A box that was mailed to CCNY. It cost $90,000 to mail the box and it had $180,000 in cash.
It cost $90, not 90,000, it cost $90.
$90 to mail it, right? $180,000 in cash.
And insurance.
And it claimed, yes, it included a letter that said, Dear Chairman Manone, long ago, I graduated from the City College in New York with a BS degree. I was a double major, physics and mathematics. I wish the enclosed funds to be used solely to support deserving junior and senior physics majors in the department who are also doubling with a. who are also doubling with a mathematics major and in need of financial support to continue their studies. The criteria you should use for deserving is a proven academic track record from their freshman and sophomore years in their physics and mathematics courses. I prefer that grades be the primary discriminant, though evaluations by their professors should not be ignored. Assuming that you're a bit curious as to why I'm doing this, the reason is straightforward. The excellent educational opportunity available to me, which I took full advantage of at C C N Y and Stuyvesant High School, gave me the basis to continue to develop first to a M A in physics, also from C C N Y, and then a double PhD physics and astronomy, and finally, a long, productive, immensely rewarding, to me, scientific career. I'm sending a copy of this letter to the Chair and Dean so that they are forewarned should you choose to confer with them when deciding on the deserving criteria. Now, that Chair did exactly what he was supposed to do. He talked to Public Safety, Public Safety talked to the police, the police talked to the feds. And after an investigation to make sure there were no issues with this, this money, we are now here to accept this wonderful, wonderful surprise in a, in a, in a box that was sent that's going to help a number of students who are double majoring in physics and mathematics. And so it just goes to the, to the, just the idea that our students appreciate the work that we do, and they know to pay it forward in some of the most original ways that you would ever find.
That's absolutely wonderful, thank you. And, and thank you Andrea for clarifying that it was ninety-dollar shipping costs. We would have picked it up. The other thing I want to say is Chancellor, you've got to ask every mailroom to thoroughly look at every box that's delivered, all right? I, we, we, we should be getting more of these. I am, I am flabbergasted and excited. So now we will, I am moving this item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, that's a lot of seconds on that one. How are you? How are you doing? Any discussion on this item?
I, I, I have one question, Glenda. When they make the movie about this, can we all be in it?
I just want to be a cameo.
There might only be six boxes, but I think, I think we can make sure we're part of that.
Thank you very much.
Well, can I just, can I just, before, before we go, not that it affects the vote, what's the real story here? I mean, this is, even in my world, a little weird. And it's kind of exciting, and I, thank goodness, it's all been deemed kosher, right Chancellor? And, and above.
And you say, and Ken, what you say is, I'm shocked, and thank you very much.
Well, we are, I've been talking to my team, her team, and she has some ideas about how we might at least let people know that this wonderful event happened. But research was done. They did research to see if there was somebody who fit the identity of the person who sent the box. They actually followed up on who lived in the, lived at the address that it said it was mailed from, but it's not the person. There's no name that's connected, so we don't know the real story yet.
So the, so Ken, the, it was trying very hard, because I mean, obviously, the first impression you get, right, is there's got to be something funny here. Yeah, I come from New York, so I, you know, I'm. I can tell you that, that we, you know, working with the FBI, I was like, please leave no stone unturned. Because we also knew that the gift was going to have to come to the board for approval, right? So we wanted to make sure that, that to the best of our knowledge, right, there was nothing, nothing fishing. The other side of the equation too is, is, I mean, I think is a great philanthropic story. I mean, in, in, you know, once you take all those things out, that, that someone wanted in, in a rather idiosyncratic way, of course, to, to pay it forward.
I think it's fabulous. Thank you very much. We want more shoeboxes.
It's better a shoebox than a mattress. They kept it underneath the mattresses.
That's, that's, that's.
May I suggest that we move to a vote? This is, this is.
Well, I was going to say, I was going to say, Batista, that that's how you'll get my endowment. Anyway, moving, we're going to take this to a vote. Thank you Chancellor for, for trying to get some decorum here. Hearing no objections or abstentions, we are happy to move this item. All right. And now seeing that we had, this, this item obviously is moving forward and has been approved, Senior Vice Chancellor Grace, I think we should bronze the box. And hearing that we have no more items on the agenda, I move to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you always, it's a pleasure.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.